Thank you, Gabe.
All right, Gabe, let's go and get started. Doug will be joining here just in a few minutes, so we can get started.
Okay, yeah, I want to respect everybody's time and thank you all for being here. I was hoping, I'm seeing a lot of names, so hopefully everybody shows up, but basically this is kind of be kind of a town hall update meeting on the Lanai Affordable Housing Project. We invited Tom Fisher, Doug Bigley, I'll be Kai Kehana, anyone from their team to kind of give us updates. But I'll just start on my end and first off, I want to say thank you all for spending your evening with us for this moment in time because it's very exciting what's happening on Lanai. This, I'm going to say this, I've said it before, this is the closest we've been in over thirty years to get another affordable housing project for sale on the island of Lanai. Closest we've ever been, a lot of times it was the big cost of infrastructure. Well, now the county has an affordable housing fund, we have a developer who knows the night these bureaucratic poles. And I'm really happy to have Ikai Kehana, Tom Fisher, Doug Bigley, guys here with us to speak on on this project that is sorely needed. I, on my end, I spoke with the mayor's administration and they're on board, they considered it a priority. And that's a very key word for in for them to say that the Lanai Affordable Housing Project is a priority. That we have funding from SHOT, so there's federal funding involved in this project, so that's wonderful. And then, just to remind you, budget season is coming up here in April for the county where we'll deliberate. And we'll see what's needed for that, but just letting you folks know that I'm I'm going to be funding for if we need it, if we need county funds. Recently, Abby, and I don't remember her last name, but she came, Tom Fisher, and I probably know hers, but she came and did a market study for for us. And that's great to have someone come and, you know, answer those questions that some folks might have up at the state level on is is there a need? And there certainly is. And with that, I think I'm gonna turn it over to Tom Fisher and, oh, Abby's last name was Cohen. But I'll turn it over to Tom Fisher or Doug, whoever you folks are ready to take this on and kind of introduce. There's Tom. And go ahead, Tom, thank you, the floor is yours.
All right, thanks, Gabe, and thanks, everyone, for participating tonight. I see some names I know and some names I don't. And as as Gabe said, my name is Tom Fisher, I'm with Ikai Kehana, we're the developer. I see Doug Bigley just joined the call, so we're we're going to be here tonight to give you kind of a brief overview of so where we are and how we got here. And I will start out by saying we are only here because specifically of Gabe Johnson's insistence that we be here. And he's a very compelling, he makes very compelling arguments and he he always reminds us that we need to do something on Lanai. So we've had a chance to look at it over the last probably twelve eighteen months. As he said, we we engage Novogradic and Company, they do a lot of the market studies for the tax credit world. We had Abby Cohen, as you said, she's actually from the DC area, she flew out last week, Gabe was kind enough to ship her around the island. And we just, Doug and I were on the phone today with her kind of finalizing that report. Our submission is due on Friday. We've done a lot of work on Lanai. We think we have a very compelling application to the state to be awarded tax credits for this, I we think so, much needed project. It's not easy, as as you said, I know it's been a long time and and there's there's lots of ways to look at the data. And there's, you know, we think because of the commitment by the county. Just so you know, we received a letter today from the Deputy Managing Director to support the project. And they have in their budget about a ten million dollar allocation for infrastructure improvements. What we need is is infrastructure to get to the sewer. And as Gabe said earlier, we were successful and assisted the county with their submission to Senator Shott's office. We have what we believe is about a five million dollar earmark coming from federal funds, which will also help the infrastructure development. So again, we're we're feeling pretty positive. I do want to caution everyone. It is a competitive process at the state and, you know, that last year, I think on the bond side of the transaction world, they had about a three hundred million dollar cap for bonds and they received about a billion dollars worth of requests. So I just want to put that out there that it is competitive, we're doing everything we can, we're we've spent our own developer money to get us to this point with the application. And we we believe in the project, we think it's the right thing to do. From, I guess, a high level, I'll let you know that we have about forty-six homes that will be developed. Those forty-six homes will be available for people between primarily fifty and sixty percent AMI. I'll let Doug kind of go through some of the specifics on the on the capital stack, but and we also, in our in our model, we have twenty-six senior apartment units being being submitted for. So in total, we'd like to bring about seventy-two new units to Lanai, I don't know, from all affordable. So Doug, I'll let you kind of jump in here and maybe you can share some of your your thoughts and experiences to how we got here. Doug, I think you're on mute.
Yeah, Tom, Tom, you you don't have the present, has everybody seen the presentation?
I I sent it around, I just sent it around before the meeting, but let me see if I can. I don't know, Gabe, is anyone here, is Roxanne there?
Roxanne's here, do you do you need to be enabled or is it?
Just so we can share the screen, I guess.
Sure, it's, you're ready, whenever you are.
All right, let me, give me, well, Doug, why don't you start and I'll kind of bring it up?
Okay, here, let me. Because I don't think I don't think everybody's maybe seen this, so I want to get a feeling for it. Just give me one second, Tom, so I can, sorry.
I I think I said, you have the email, right? I sent it to you a few minutes ago.
Yeah, let me see, we'll just real quick here, because we're trying, I'm just going to switch over real quick.
There you go, documents.
Can you go? This is, okay, and then join with all your audio, okay? We load up. Let's leave this, leave this here.
One second here.
So as you guys sit up, I'll just, I don't know if there's.
Sorry, guys, I'm.
It's okay, it's it's fine, I can I can speak to, you know, folks, it's the end of Fifth Street is where the actual parcel is, right behind Home and Homes. Where the new skate park is, if you just continue on Fifth Street, that's kind of where we're going to have the the parcel of land is where it is. Is where we're going to be building, so as you know, there is no, there's nothing out there, it's a field, but this is a very important point, it's fully entitled land, which means that's as close as it's going to get on Lanai for a really good project because we've got all the entitlements. So, and just to let everybody know, if there's time at the end of all this, we can take some questions, but we'll we'll let Doug guys get set up in the meantime.
And Gabe, I'm I'm pulling, I'm going to pull up the presentation, but there's a couple of things that Tom mentioned that I want to.
Sure.
Emphasize, yeah, let let me put this up real quick.
Okay.
And I'll talk, but what I want to emphasize is that Tom emphasized that it's a committed process, process and it really is, yeah, can you put it up?
Okay, we got to share, oh, that's a nice house, we can see a nice new house.
Yeah, there you go, and that, we've already done this process on you know, on the Big Island, we have, we have these homes that, and this is kind of the same, you know, our review, so this would be what your, these homes would look like. You know, and like Tom mentioned, I think the goal and gave, this is a county thing, is the houses at the end of the compliance period could be essentially acquired by the by the renter.
So a rental model.
A rental model, and what's important, but I, you know, we've done these now enough to know that what's important to understand is that the end of the compliance period, the rent to home, the rent to buy is based upon the AMI, not the market. You know, the constant question I get is, what would the purchase price of this home be at the kind of the end of the compliance period? And that is a not a price that we set, not a price that the market sets, but it's set by essentially HUD. And and generally the county, so there's rules to it, and here's the irony though of it too, or what, some of the things that you wouldn't find with a normal home, if the price went if interest rates go up, the the home price actually drops. Because as and partly, Gabe, it's your model, to be honest with you, where you packed in, you know, other things into the, you know, what income really is, right? So I just want to emphasize that that's how this this program would work. So, and I've kind of gotten ahead of myself, but this is, anyway, this is the type of model, this is what you'd see kind of out there. We're, this is a trilogy of companies here that we are, that make up kind of our what we call blue companies and our affiliation, so one is a nonprofit kind of service provider. They actually not a service provider, service coordinator, then there's Blue, which is kind of the developer, and then there's a property management company, okay? This is just, you guys can all have this presentation, but this is just our sales pitch, but the point of this this slide is that we've done a lot of this stuff. So I think that's really all you need to know, that's, I mean, this is a space that we're very comfortable in, it's all the project, this is all developments we do are kind of in this space, there's just a few that are outside it. So when it comes to any kind of affordable housing, you know, sometimes the subsidized housing, this is where we we operate very effectively. This is, will give you an idea of the types of stuff we've done on the island, so, and this community right here that you see here is an example of, this is the one that is in Kona, that's very similar to what we're suggesting here. Gabe, this is what you were talking about, you could probably talk a little bit better than than I can. But there's this site here, and there's some of this is in school, right, Gabe, it's part of the school. Right here, something is, and then we're kind of back in here, Tom, you can talk to this probably better than I can, right about.
Yeah, so there there's a, there's a parcel or Fifth Street that will be eventually, it's set up, I think, to go to the Department of Education, it's about forty-two acres. Then there's about nine acres of a, five acres of a retention area. And also about four acres that will be used for like a quasi-public-private use, could be a.
If you'll allow me to jump in real quick on that quasi-public quasi parcel. Right now, and this is just, I'm only bringing this up right now, Tom, because you're talking about that area, now let you continue, I'm sorry to interrupt, but basically we're trying to get the military here to build us the category five hurricane shelter in that quasi-public area. They're coming to do Tropic, Operation Tropic Care, which many of our folks here on Lanai remember when the military came and be free of medical service at the school. Well, they also have a construction arm of that, and if they can come, maybe in a couple of years, they could build a category five bunker in that quasi-public zoned area, which would be really nice, because it would basically be across the street from the proposed Lanai Affordable Housing Project, so just want to jump in there and mention that one little parcel land. Well, that's the intention, but go ahead, Tom.
Okay, that's good, I had not heard that before, so thank you, Gabe. From a, from an overall standpoint, just to review that there's a, the the county parcel is about a hundred and fifteen acres in total. And our, what we're calling Phase One will encompass about twenty-eight and a half acres. As Doug said earlier, this is already zoned and it's already under a two oh one H, we're using the existing two oh one H to to execute the development. And so what will happen is that, you know, we'll do our twenty and a half acres. The deal, it will be then, at some point, we'll amend the two oh one H for the DOE piece for the quasi-public piece that you just described, Gabe, along with the retention area. And then it will leave a Phase Two for future development down the road, should the should the market and and, you know, depth and studies warrant. So that's kind of it, you'll see a piece where it says DHHL, there is there, there are neighbor there, they do have I think they've got about seventy acres, if I remember right, in that parcel. But that's not part of our current development. Although we will, as we bring the sewer infrastructure down Fifth Street and tie it into the county system, we'll we'll be going past their property and they'll, of course, participate on that with us, that's the plan anyway. So that'll kind of give you an idea of the of the overall scope. Yes, so, you know, this is our, again, our site plan. And again, it's maybe a little small, but again, this this is available, we'll make sure it's out by a PDF format, but this is our Phase One, we're going to be creating a park area. We'll, we'll, there'll be a, there'll be a community center with a with a park area that you can see on there. The senior housing is further in yellow there toward the bottom. And the the single-family home plan that we we have, the first slide you saw, will go into other other spaces there.
And Tom, tell me, just interrupt real quick here, and also in this section right here, this has all been reworked, so, Gabe, I'll get you out the new, you know, before we applied, we, you know, we continue to work these things, so this this area has been kind of reworked. So this is, Tom's right, there's forty-six homes here, then there's, what is it, twenty-six of the?
Twenty-six, yeah.
There are twenty-four homes and then, Gabe, we have some of the, we, this is responsive to the last community meeting we've had, but we have a couple, we we're going to have, you know, managers on site. Then we we're, this community center has been reworked based upon, you know, the other discussions that we had where for the delivery of service, you know, service delivery, and we're also leaving an extra apartment, I should say, here for, you know, those, remember, there was, people commented last time we were over about kind of the getting the service providers over, so, and not, so we'll have a unit and a place for them to deliver their services, so like if you have mental health issues or any of that kind of stuff, and people mentioned that when we were out there, and several other things, so people that have to come off island, they can stay and then work here, right? And so we're we're kind of have that little feature set up. These are apartments, these are, we're going to do something kind of unique in that we're going to bifurcate this into senior apartments and then the homes, because I think that was like your we're trying to, it's like the eye of a needle, we are trying to get your list, I mean, you gave us quite a bit to do on a pretty modest site, but we're going to have the senior component here, you've got the community center, which is a place for service delivery, we got the park going in, and then we've got the homes. Okay, and the apartments are apartments for, into perpetuity, they'll just be senior apartments.
Right.
Okay, sorry.
That's right, so again, seventy-two units in total between the forty-six homes and the twenty-six apartments. And as I said earlier, this is all part of the original two oh one H approval, so we're not really, we are somewhat limited in the areas that we're able to develop. But as Doug said, we've, we have, we have continued to improve this and and that, we'll we'll get you over the revised site plan as well. So you'll see exactly what we submitted. This is utilities, as we mentioned before, you know, this is going to require us to to move the R one water. We will have to have a lift station. R one water was put in a while back, and unfortunately, it would be right through where some of the home lots will be, so part of our development contemplates moving the R one, tying in the sewer, we do have water. Will serve letter from the water company there on Lanai, so we have really everything that that we believe will score this project pretty high.
Let me, let me, let me kind of engage on a couple of things so that we're all kind of on the same page here, I just want to. It's not, it's not necessarily just, Tom is right, the the biggest score is going to be readiness. And that's going to be a challenge this time around, I think, you know, because the, though I think that on other areas we'll we'll will score well, other areas maybe not so well, you know, because again, readiness will be, the things that are challenging here, and I've mentioned this to a few times, Gabe, is that the the demand profile over there, you met with the market study people, didn't you?
Abby.
Abby, yeah, so it's a unusual market for them, they are having a hard time getting their arms around it, right? And so that's, I think that's going to be a challenge, let me just, just so everybody is on this, again, I want to make sure we have all sides of this, so I think the challenges are, Gabe, from my perspective over the last, you know, several months, is that you have a demand that's hard to identify. It's not that it's not there, it's just not traditional and hard to identify, because, you know, they understand that people are, might be, you know, cohabitating, you know, a substandard conditions, or they may be overcrowded, but they're just, it's just not as apparent. So we're going to have to be, and so one of the things, Gabe, is I think we got to talk about how we're going to be more, what do I want to say, convincing, I guess, for lack of a better term, you know? The other challenge over there is, is you know, it's really high cost. Right, so it's a high-cost place to build, so, and the third thing is, it's super, you know, you have a lot of expenses that are coming in now, particularly with the insurance costs have gone through the roof, I mean, we're seeing double and triple the insurance. And what happens is when you group all those together, the amount of debt we can carry goes way, way, way down, right? Because you've got high cost, you've got, and so we're going to have to have a discussion about how you know, the the gap funding comes comes to play, I mean, we just got, the good news about this site is as I was explaining to the newspaper, wanted to hear kind of what was going on. And I don't want to get ahead of us, but there seems to be a lot of inertia right now, I mean, people want it done. You certainly want it done, I think you've got the the mayor's office behind you, they want it done, they've gone out and got federal funding. We're meeting with DHHL, they would like to get something done. And so we do have some some realistic hurdles to go through, I don't think they're insurmountable, I just think that we all have to be attentive to, you know, we've already made an application for affordable housing funds to to county, so they're in there now, and so.
How much is that that you're asking?
We made it, we we made analogy, was it seven-two, Tom, do you remember from the letter, was it seven point two million? Tell me, I have to unmute yourself.
Yeah, sorry about that, yes, no, seven-two, that's right.
So at seven point two million, then evidently there's some funding available through the general fund. Okay, so that the mayor's office is working on. And I think that, I think what they came up with, and I'm just, again, I'm got to check this, but you would know, but I think they set aside some general fund money in addition to the seven-two. Okay, so there's, I think about ten. And then you've got the federal money is between two and five. That's what we know today. There's never been a commitment level that significant related to most sites, in particular, something on Lanai, okay, so I think the dynamics are there, but we have to see how it kind of play, I, if I were guessing, man, I don't think we can carry any debt on this site. And the reason again is because over time the expenses are so close to to be competitive at the state, this is too complicated probably for maybe this call, but it's something that we've got to get into, but the expenses, let let's, are are very, very close to the income. So that in time, the expenses over shoot over the income, see what I'm saying? So thi- this is how, because the state to be competitive, they want everybody to, you know, skew down. And but they don't, they ignore the expense, so we have some of those challenges to do, so to, just to let everybody know, is that we will have to, we have some challenges on the horizon, again, I'm not saying they're insurmountable, but I don't, I don't want to we'll be back around if I show you the performer, and and I don't think we're that far off if we got everything. The other thing I I wanted to propose, and I'm not proposing, just let the community know that, to the extent that we we weren't, if the state, if we fell behind, I don't know who else is at the state, if somebody has like building permits and is going in now, it'll be hard to you know, they'll be more ready than we will, so that will be a hard thing. And what I was, I haven't really even talked to Tom about this, but the other thing I wanted to throw out for everybody, for you, Gabe, is I would like to commence the infrastructure development. Because if we're getting, you know, federal dollars, right, and and, you know, general fund dollars, it might behoove us if we could collect that and we were deferred on this particular entry that we actually could do the DHHL model. And what DHHL does is they do almost like finished locks, you know, well, not finished locks, but they do curves, gutters and all that kind of stuff, it's pretty close to finished locks, but like we did on the Big Island, and that model might really be appropriate in this in this circumstance, because the the, again, there's so much cost in here that you cannot pay all the debt. You know, you couldn't pay it as debt anyway, because it's almost like partly a grant, because there's no, there's no funding available because the costs are so high. So these are all technical things, but I just want to lay it out there that these, this is probably what's going to transpire. There's, there's a deal in here. Right here, there's a deal in here. And we just kind of have to stay with it a bit, I think, a bit longer, and so I I want to just get everybody warmed up for that, you know, that we have to, we're going to have to do some other things to kind of keep keep it on track here. To me, for time, I don't want to wait, because if I wait, and if I can concurrently build as I'm working with the state, then I can get ahead of this thing. So I'm going to be coming at the county and saying, I think we need to build, we need to start. We need to do a DHHL model, that would be my guess, Tom, and I haven't.
Well.
When we bought, when we worked with DHHL, they come to us with this lock. And so that, you know, we're just doing the vertical, basically, and we're finishing creating some vertical, and I think that would help the model, and I think it would help with my timing. I want to be done with this, I, we're not, if you know Gabe from us, we don't like to sit with things very long, we like to.
I know you guys work very fast, and that's what we want. If you guys get the contract and it goes that way, we want you to build, you know, we want, definitely, and I like your pace, obviously the proof's in the pudding with look at some of the projects that the Kai Kehana's done, you guys build very quickly, it's not going to take generations.
Yeah, if people, and if people here over on Kona, they, you know, they can certainly view those homes that we built, so if they want to get familiar with our product and what we do, they can certainly go over there, but I'll, I, but anyway, I want to, so we've, we, you know, this this Lanai particularly because of its remoteness, it's, you know, relatively small population. So it has just challenges they haven't seen before, but I think since I get even from the mayor's office, this is just me, and with, you know, you're urging them, I'm sure it could be one of two things, them just wanting to get you off their back, it could be that, but are we recording this? I think we are.
Yes, we are, yes, we are, Doug.
Or it could be that, and and the the more likely thing is, I think, at some point, they just think you're up to bat, you know what I mean? Like, it's been long enough, this thing's been hanging out there forever, and I'm kind of thinking also, they're thinking, you know, probably now is as good as any time, because they did aggressively pursue the federal grant and stuff, so I was, you know, I was impressed by that, and if we get something from DH, DHHL two, because we can cooperate on the infrastructure improvement, which is something they're comfortable with, we could, we, you know, could work on the infrastructure with them, because that's going to take a while anyway, you know what I mean, I'd like to, you know.
Well, and I, just to add, just to add a little bit there, Doug, and and just so we focus on it, right, you you hit on this, there there is a readiness factor in the scoring for all these deals. And there will be, no doubt, some applicants that have building permits in their hand, right? We don't have building permits yet, there's still a process we'll go through for building permits now. We have been able in the past to explain that here's, and with our application includes this, right, where if if awarded, you know, here's how our our construction timeline works. But again, part of what we.
Well, they didn't even require, the building permits, Tom, up till now, haven't entered the picture of building permits up until this year.
Correct.
They virtually weren't part of it, you know, as long as you, you know, they kind of looked at the two oh one H and said, are you, and we, and this, it has a two oh one H, so that's a benefit, that's a huge benefit, there'll be people going in that don't have two oh one Hs, I'm sure.
Right.
But it's that one or two, you know, projects, and I don't know what's on your agenda, but, I mean, what you have right now, Gabe, I don't know. But it sounds like to me there's some people with building permits, and the way we would look at this is, again, if you, if we came in, if we had come in with building permits, if we if we had infrastructure and building permits, we'd be, you know, golden. So however this happens, I just want everybody to know, I think that there are other ways to do this to kind of keep this on schedule by doing things concurrently. Because when you can build things like the infrastructure, you know, you, it it'll help, so.
But just to, just to remind everyone, you know, they add, they accept applications once a year every February, right? So if we're not able to get this round for the overall project that puts us to next February. But to Doug's point, we want to try to go ahead and be working between now and next February, all the infrastructure, so when. But to Doug's point, we wanna try to go ahead and be working between now and next February, all the infrastructure. So when. If, again, if, if we don't get awarded this year, we wanna be super ready next year and that, the, the infrastructure has to happen no matter what. And that can happen with the funding that we've just mentioned, and that's, that puts us.
Very important point you brought up, Tom. Thank you for sharing that.
Yep.
Yeah, so, so that's kind of my. Um. I, I, I guess I could, the other thing I could say. Is we're laser focused and we've, we've been highly successful in completing projects like this. And we know a lot of people come to us with projects and say, I've had it for. Like, like Kukulia was a forty, forty years in the making. They didn't think it was possible. That's gonna be done now, uh, by March or April, we'll be completely, uh, completed with, you know, building permits. But, um, it's gonna take, it's gonna take a concerted effort on our part to, you know, push this over the top, I think, but it's. You know, it's, it's within range of doing. But I just, you know, that's why, but why this project hasn't been done is because the effort. On this project. I mean, a lot of people are always saying, well, why, why does it come now or whatever? Because it is a tough one. It has all that, you know, and for us, you know, it's, it's still good, it's still a good project. And I, and, and quite frankly, you know, of course we met with, uh. Everybody, including, um, Iki Pua on it. I mean, everybody's. Committed. And I don't think you've ever seen that before, uh.
Kiki Pua is on the line here today too, right?
Yeah, and if, if everyone was asking me too, it's kind of funny. They said, well, why, why do you wanna do this? Project, which is what I think Butch asked me the first time I was out there. And part of it is because everybody else wants to. You know, that's like, we, sometimes it's nothing but NIMBY, you know what I'm saying? Like. I mean, NIMBY issues, I, you know, mayors, I have people that don't want it. This one is one that I, like I said, is everybody just seems to want it now. I don't know what, you know, how the stars aligned. But they did, and so we're here and we'll just stay with it until we, till we get it. So there, so if anybody has any questions, you know, we're, we're open to it.
Okay, um, if you don't mind sharing screen, uh, Doug, and we can.
Yeah. I have to check with my M I S department. You don't wanna share that? It's embarrassing, yeah. I mean, get that out there, yeah.
That's great.
With you, tell him I said hi.
Um, okay, all right, everybody, um, you heard, I know that's a lot of tech, tech talk from Doug, but you know, this is complicated stuff. So now's a good chance to ask, ask some questions. I wanna try to do it one at a time. Please don't talk over each other. So. If anybody has a question, turn your camera. Okay, I got a questionnaire from Ben Sheets. Uh, Ben, you can unmute yourself and ask a question.
Um, hey, my name is Ben Sheets, um, and just curious, you mentioned federal funding. I'm curious, um. If there's any concern or what challenges might be faced if, uh, the, you know, we're seeing, um, cuts and freezes of federal funding currently. I mean, how that might impact this project, uh, moving into the future.
Doug or Tom, you guys wanna address that?
We. Feel that one. Here, Tom, is that, I'll just take that one. I'll tell you a couple of things. One is. We have not yet, I had somebody call me just, um. Last week about the same thing. Actually, it was our architect that called us, and I don't see anything imminent on the horizon that indicates that housing isn't. A priority. I know that the. The new, is it Fane or, um, or something that who's now headed the senate? I, I think he's a pro. Affordable housing developer. Uh. But. Ben, right? Um, the, but it's unpredictable, right? I mean, I think if anything, I think the last. Few weeks here have demonstrated there's unpredictability in the marketplace, no doubt. Uh, but having said that, I'm, I'm not sure we're on the, I think this program's been successful enough, so I don't really see a huge. Uh, concern there. I will tell you that the federal piece is not. Uh, the most significant part of the funding. Uh, so I don't think it would. Would derail it. But I think it would be, you know, we're, we. Go to every single bucket we can possibly. So if we, we see us on a street corner with Tom with a placard. Uh, that's just, you know, probably project related. Uh, so, but Ben, it's a good question. It's always a risk, but I don't see that. I think it's been delayed a bit because of it, but I think we'll settle in. And, you know, the, the new president's a builder, if nothing else. So I think he does understand.
Right.
Uh, buildings.
Yeah, I, I would probably add to that, Doug, that, you know, historically. Uh, affordable housing has been, uh, promoted by both sides of the aisle, so to speak, and. I think there's obviously the current, uh, feeling is that we wanna take care of America first. And we're seeing, we've obviously all see what's, what's happening with other, other funding being, being produced, but I don't, I don't see it. To your point, it is a risk, we don't know, but I, I don't, I just don't think that. Uh, that there would be the appetite to, to come after affordable housing.
Okay, um, thanks for that response. Uh, if anyone doesn't wanna ask on camera, you can always text through the chat button to Roxanne. And Roxanne will ask your question, but in the meantime, does anybody have a question? You can either raise your hand, turn on your camera, whatever you guys like. I'm gonna make sure I get. Everybody an opportunity to speak if they have any questions. Uh. We're a pretty good sized crowd here, which is great. So if anybody has anything to add. Uh, and I'm trying to scroll through to see if anybody, but I, I have a question for, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead. I just, I saw Kiki Pua, I didn't answer the question, I just, sorry.
Okay. Dr. Danzel, you, floor is yours.
Oh, huh, no, no question. Thank you. I just wanna say thank you for hanging in there and showing up. Uh, we really appreciate it and. Yeah, we just say thank you for wanting to come and do this, cause no one has. So glad you guys are still in the game.
No.
Well, we're. We appreciate your help on this too.
Yeah, I know, I think that that's what, one thing we're, uh, I, I think I said it before. I mean, it seems like. The resistance. Is low. And that's helpful, right? Because again, it's usually the resistance is high, but we will, and you know, like I said to. Earlier is that, uh, we'll be. Staying with. This is, you know, we're, we're like, like getting gum on your shoe, right? It's kind of hard to get off, you know, that's what I think, so.
I see Robin K turned his camera on. I assume Robin has a question?
Yeah, it's kind of a, um, you mentioned, I think you said twenty six senior apartments. And forty six homes. There's an effort that's been going on here for almost two years now, and much longer than that actually, to establish an arch, an adult residential care home. And we're looking at a number of places in the, in this community. But with you folks building a, a whole new development, I was just wondering a couple of questions about that. Number one. Um, are any of the, uh, single family homes gonna have the four bedroom size? And number two, is there any possibility without delaying your project? Of dedicating one of the senior apartments to becoming a, an adult residential care facility?
Well. Tom, let me. I'd like to address that one, actually. Um. The answer is, um. We do have four bedroom homes, so we, we, we don't have a lot of them. We have, cause that's the demand profile, this kind of. Some force, but we do have some, but Robin, can I, can you turn your camera on for a minute?
Sure.
If you might, I don't, sometimes I.
No, that's fine.
I like looking at people. That's, um, but I was, I was gonna say to you, uh. We could, when we're out there next and we, we do wanna get back out, but we'll, we, we should have a broader discussion, because what I'm gonna add to this is that. You know, our, our, we usually put also a community program coordinator on our, on each property that we have, and that's the person that reaches out to the, all the service providers. Uh, you know, both in the community or people we can bring over, but like in these kind of what I'll call highly specialized areas. Uh, I'd like to know who the people are, when, you know, when it's the adult care home, is that, that's obviously gonna be a, somebody who will have to provide the care, right? And all that kind of stuff associated with it.
And, and we have, we're, there's a hospice organization on Maui called Hospice Maui, that's agreed to be the, the operator of this. Uh, adult residential care home. And the reason I asked about four bedrooms is that in order to make this work, um, for our community, we're looking at a, 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 um, arch. Type one, which requires up to five. Residents, patients, if you will.
Right.
And so we were looking at places that might have four bedrooms that would accommodate, uh, at least three to four people, so we can make this work. It will be a nonprofit. Uh, but it's still gotta, you know, pay all of its expenses.
Understood, and, uh, we'd be, uh, happy to talk to you about it.
Okay.
That's the type of stuff where we like to see it go on, but we have to have help in that space, you know what I'm trying, we're, you know. I, I think we do a good job building and we do a lot of, you know, we, we, we manage, you know, and we, we're interested in the social service side of it as well. But we just don't have the, some of the niche expertise, so that when we get over there, we'll go to you. And let's talk about it, and then we'll figure out, because if, if we have strong service provider, which you're mentioning that you do, then that makes the pathway. And then the other thing is, is that. We probably wanna do that. You know, sooner than later, because if the home needs to be retrofitted or, you know. Other things, then we'd have to know kind of what that is. You know, we have to work, you know, with your. Group that you're mentioning, because a lot of times when we get involved with these types of situations, you know, it requires us to build, almost build to suit, if you will. So we have to make certain changes and now would probably be a good time to. So if you wanna. You know, is there a way that you could maybe do, we could, will it change? Contact information?
Yeah, I'm sure I can get it from Gabe and, and I, I don't wanna take up everybody else's time. I will, uh, start a conversation with, with both of you, uh, Doug and Tom. And I'll get the information from Gabe. And I appreciate your openness to this. Thank you.
Oh, I'd be happy to, I, I hope we're successful. I really do. I think that's a huge need, so I appreciate it.
That's great. I, I, I'll let that conversation go and thank you, uh.
Thank you both.
Um, okay, we're gonna move it over to Butch and then I'll read a question that was written in the chat. So go ahead, Butch, you have a question?
Yeah, I have two. Um, number one, um. Doug and Tom, are you guys still looking at? Rent to own as part of this? And if so, could you share a PDF that we could pass around to the residents? And then number two. Um, as part. Of this process, will, will any financial literacy? Um, supports be available to help people get to the point where they can qualify for these units?
Doug and Tom, you guys wanna take that?
Yeah, I mean, I can. I can take that one. Now, I'm gonna give this one a shot. And the answer is, uh, be a good idea. Uh, that's one of the, probably the biggest, uh, one of the biggest hurdles we had. Uh, working through, uh, D H H L is because it does take, it's, it's a big transition, you know, for people. And so I think, yes, there are groups that do this, uh, I think Hawaii Community. Housing that we've worked with before. Uh, and so there are a couple of groups that we can talk to about it and then try to get people to, you know, and, and get someone over there to, to do it now. About the structure of the deal, it's a little bit different. Well, it'd probably be. Similar to the D H H L model, so we can kind of, I can describe that to you later, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll try to give you a kind of an overview of it. But then I would like to, uh, Gabe, it's probably good for you and I maybe to have a discussion and get the framework, you know, cause there's a whole. Just because we do it, we've done it differently here on a lot of different models. So I'd like to maybe. Understand what your vision of it is, and then we can, we can kind of develop the program, cause it isn't a one size fits all, I don't think. So. Next time we're over, can we, maybe we can have a meeting and kind of settle into what the model might look like. But, um. It's got a, there, there's some. There's some, uh, you know, how, I think the biggest thing is to also to try to. Let people, fill people's expectations. I mean, I've had people that are at, like, some of these homes will be, you know, into the, there's some thirty and forty. I think it's actually forty and fifty maybe on these homes. I mean, they're, they're that, that's. How deep we, some of these zones are skewed. So when you get down into the. Uh, lower levels, we're gonna need a lot, you know, we'll need training, because you do have to get to the financial part of it, you know, so. You know what I'm saying, Gabe? I mean, it's.
You see.
You know, the transition is tough, because a lot of these people have only lived in apartments. There, you know, so we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to get through that. So Butch, you're, you're spot on, and we probably should start that now. It's, it's basically not at the time you're selecting your home. Uh, so you bring up a great point. Uh, I don't think even D H H L did that when we, when we worked with them. I mean, it, by the time we had the homes ready, it was just right now, you know, we started the financial, it seemed like a week out. So that's a good point, Butch. Oh, oh, we gotta do that for you. But I would, I would delay on, it's probably gonna be a little while before we'll have a model for you guys, cause I'm gonna work with the county on that. Let me write that down, though.
And, you know, for, for, for the current, um, ownership, it's, the, the county is retaining the fee simple on the, on the land. Under their two oh one H, so we'll be under a leasehold, um. As, as we operate the properties through the rental period. And then as we, we've talked before, Gabe, we, we can look at individual lots, we can look at. You know, kind of many, there's a number of ways to do, which is what Doug's kind of alluding to. We just need to.
Right.
Figure out the model.
I, I think the, um, what Butch is asking is, you know, we, when my, when we went, my team went door to door, the rent to own model was very highly, like, people wanted it. And I think what Doug was saying is that many people have been renting their whole lives, so. Of course, there's gonna be needing some, uh, financial literacy for it, but. The idea that the rent to own model sounds really good. I live in it for fifteen years and I'm, you know, it's. It's gonna be bought down a little bit, so that when I do buy it, it'll be much lower than market, much, much lower than market. And I think that's what a lot of people were, were thinking, because we don't plan to go anywhere, right? Then we're not a. I, Lenaii folks live here for generations, you know, the, so. Um, I hope, uh, Butch, that was both your questions, cause I'm gonna move on and if, if, if that was answered your questions.
Yeah, as. And just requesting a PDF be, um. Shared with us so we can pass it around. Because lis- listening to rent to own is, is hard to understand. Having on paper, I think is, is better for residents.
Thanks. Sure. Okay, thanks, Butch. I see some hands up. I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to spin a lot of plates here, so I'm gonna read a question here that was in the chat. So if the demand. Exceeds the supply of housing, which we imagine it will, what will the selection process be for acquiring the units? Now, I know Doug and, uh, Tom ways, but I'll tell you right off the bat, I really want these folks to be Lenaii residents preference, but we have to do it legally. Um, so there's many, many ways to do it. Um, Tom, Doug, you guys wanna speak on that?
I can give it a whirl. Um, I'll give it a whirl real quick. Um, if you know anybody on the county council, I don't know anybody on this particular. Uh. Knows it, but you can, there's things you can do, you know, in fact, I think you spearheaded something on that for Maui in general, right?
So I think. A bill one eleven, and that, that bill gives a preference, it ranks. Uh, how many years you've been a resident for Maui County, right? That doesn't, that's not island specific, so. Even Maui Island folks could apply, but we would rank them. So the way we would do it is you do the lottery, just like we did, remember? Hope Cloud did a lottery, pull your name out of the hat, right? So we would pull four names out of the hat. And then rank those four names on how many years you've been a resident. If you've been here, if you're born and raised, you're top of the list. If you've been here fifteen, twenty years, you're mid-tiered. If you've just been here one or two years, you're bottom tier. But you offer these, and then the first person might not be ready. So then it would go to the second person. And if the second person's not ready, it can go to the third person. So it makes it legally sound to do it that way. But, um, Doug, Tom, what do you guys think of just having the application you could only apply in person at a, at a Lenaii? Office, you know, like something like that, where you, you're not gonna have mainland folks come fly all the way out there and just pick up an application that they might or might not get, right?
I think that's okay, but I, and, and that's fine. We, we, that's worked for us in other. Uh, areas, and particularly would work well. Over there, I'm sure, because, uh, it's remote. The only caveat I'll add to that, however, is that. If you can nail it down, if, 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 if you can nail it down to the island, the first is the first choice, like we did with, um. The fire.
Right.
Same where we said, the circle was to fire people first, and then we, cause we wanna go out beyond. Um. Lenaii at some point, and I'm just bringing this to you, because here was the failure of our, one of our programs was. That. People wanna bring their people home. You know, they wanna bring their relatives that should have been on Lenaii or people that left for a year, cause he just simply had no house, and they wanna bring him back. Yeah, so at some point, if we had enough homes, right, we would want that second ring. So if you can do like a first ring, second ring. That would be awesome, because that would be like the fire, and so there's models that I'll just throw that out there. Uh, but I wanna emphasize. That if your demand is high enough to exhaust the stock. We will be back. This is not, this, what we just showed you. Was just a piece. Of the, of the. Property owned, I mean, down at the county. This is just phase, you know, we call it phase one. And so when I, again, I look at the market studies, you know, market studies sometimes are ten percent, what they call capture rate, you know, you need to capture ten percent of the people that live there. To be able, you know, it's a capture rate, how market study people do it, but like. In some of the markets that we have here, like if I'm at eighty percent, there's like one person I have to look for, so. then nobody, nobody wants that, you know, to find the one person. So what I'm saying is, as soon as we unlock the demand, if if you are disappointed and something of everybody, you know, oftentimes people are, because we only have so much supply and demand, but I think there's probably enough land there to satisfy. So to the extent we can, you prove the market study people wrong, and we have the problem that whoever asked the question, if we have that problem, God bless you, I hope we do. And then we'll just keep building.
We, because there there's about another forty-five acres in phase two for residential. So to Doug's point, we we certainly have space and the county has space to keep building.
Okay, great. Um, so I saw David turn his camera on and then I saw Chelsea had her hand up. So David, did you have a question?
Uh, yes, I'm uh David Hamonha. I'm vice chancellor here at University of Hawaii Maui College. And um the the question I have is actually two questions. The university has a desire to either renovate, rebuild, or even possibly reconstruct a new La Ni education center for our students. And um in doing so, we've had preliminary discussions with our lessor, Ulama La Ni. And I think in those discussions, the idea of possibly building the new ed center within your um affordable high housing uh development plan uh was surfaced. And at least the way I understood it, it was the possibility of in that public quasi-public uh plot of land that you talked about, maybe uh becoming a military shelter or something like that. So my first question is whether or not it's still a possibility for the university to be in that property. And if so, if it is still a possibility, what kind of timelines are we um envisioning in terms of when there might be roads and uh
Right.
infrastructure brought into that area?
Okay, that's a tough question, because and it was spinning a lot of plates. And I don't know if Doug or Tom want to speak on it, but I'll I'll say for that quasi-public zoning area, the military is gonna come and do tropic care. Is Roxanne, is it next year, right? And then
Yeah, twenty twenty-six.
And then their construction team might come two years after that. Is that right, Roxanne? They have a
Either, either if they can do it, depending on what it is that we're asking them to do. Um, but I think it would be at the soonest twenty twenty-seven, if not, yes, twenty twenty-eight.
So that's when the infrastructure road would reach out there. And of course, you could just, you know, hook up to that. If, you know, I'm not the mayor, so you're gonna have to work with the mayor on on that kind of issue, you know, uh, but at the end of the day, I think that's the goal is to put those I, those things in the quasi-public quasi uh zone land. If now, I I will let Ikai Kohana speak on it, but if they were to put something like that inside the affordable housing project, does that jam up the two O and H? Because two O and H is they're fast tracks, so any kind of deviation, they, it kind of slow, it might slow them down. So maybe Doug or Tom, how would that slow down the two O and H? Would that jam up a bit?
Let me, let me, let me just take that one for a minute, Doug. Um, so the existing two O and H only speaks to the the ha- affordable housing, right? We're gonna have to go back and amend the two O and H to take care of the rent to own and so forth, right? So um that will be something that we'll have to look into. And and I will say this, you know, there's that forty-ish acre piece that was identified to go to DOE and I've heard the DOE really wasn't that enthused about getting it. Um, so that you've got that forty acres kind of sitting there. And then you have uh the five acre quasi-public piece that is within the boundaries of our phase one. So uh we would certainly be very supportive. David, what's what size uh, what size use would you think you would have? A need for? I mean, what's what size facility?
I think Kikipu has her.
Oh, Dr. Dan, so go ahead. You have something to add to the conversation?
Definitely. Thank you so much, David, for participating in this call and very excited that um you brought this up. So um Tom is correct. Um, part of the phase one does include the four point nine four acre public quasi-public. And then just for everyone to have context, it's quite a large parcel, five acres. And so there's more than enough room to do sort of, and and again, as Gabe, um Councilmember Johnson said, it is up to the mayor and it really is up to the mayor to come to La Ni and ask La Ni, what do they want to do in the public quasi-public area? And so all of these different things are ideas, but it really should come from you all, La Ni's community of what they want. Councilmember Johnson is very excited about the resiliency hub. It's very much needed. I know you guys all have talked about a resiliency hub. I know Mayor talked about that when he came for budget. Uh, University of Hawaii is also a permitted principal use within public quasi-public colleges, educational institutions and stuff like that. And since UH has an interest, um, that's something and the community, UH Y College wants to do this. So I think it's a discussion for all of us to have. Robin has a great idea, you know, senior center. There's a whole bunch of things that can be there. It can all be co-located. I mean, every other island has these civic center areas that includes all of these different pieces. And I think if you kind of look at it from a master planning standpoint, it's something, but I think it's a discussion, as Councilmember Johnson said, mayor, you know, it's mayors, counties and um really involving the community, all of you here tonight in collaboration with the developer, because it is part of phase one. So it is part of the first um that has been approved. So would not jeopardize a two O and H.
Right.
Mahalo.
I was wondering, yeah, thank you. Uh, one one question I have for David, because I have no idea, but what what is the size of the parcel that you would need for something like that?
You you know, we haven't had uh consultants on board and we like to build to build for the future. So the existing site is, we understand is just too crowded right now. So but as in terms of how large the new structure should be, we, I I cannot really say at this point. I can tell you that our head center on on the island of Molokai is about ten thousand square feet, though.
Yeah.
And that that's just a building.
Right. I mean, again, I think that I think as Kikipu indicated, it really this type of of collaboration is what's needed, because we we do have within that initial phase one parcel this public quasi-space. And as I mentioned, there's a forty acre parcel for DOE, which could be, you know, have multiple uses. So um, but yeah, I think we would certainly take direction from the mayor's office, council and and this community about what you'd like to see. Uh, we would likely, you know, we would certainly be participating in it, but um we just have to look and, you know, see if it doesn't affect the existing um proposed transaction. But as I said, we will need to amend the two O and H um as we sort of look, you know, let's get through the first phase, let's get the apartments built. Let's see what demand looks like, but certainly that that piece is there. It's not going anywhere, right?
Yeah.
Be be for a community use.
From what it's worth, though, I think that's a great idea. Super.
That's a great idea. Yeah, I agree.
If you want, because the other thing is, we had to go back in, we we could figure something out, I'm sure. Okay.
Yeah.
That's great. Thanks.
All right, let's let's move on to Chelsea's question. Uh, winner of best librarian in the world award. Go ahead, Chelsea.
Uh, thanks. So I don't know if I misunderstood or um maybe I'm just not kind of aware of this subject. But I thought I heard when uh earlier when you were presenting, I thought I heard you say something to the effect of of kind of like if if we are awarded, or you know, if we get it. So my question is, this presentation today, because I know Gabe has shared with us uh about your work and how wonderful um you you folks are in serving our our communities. Um, so I guess what I'm just wondering is this presentation today is what you folks would like to do here on La Ni. But is is this, again, if you get it? I just, I just kind of want to be clear on whether this is like, okay, this is where where we're gonna go and this, these guys are gonna do it, or if we're still kind of in, like, this is what we're presenting and hopefully, you know, everything works out and we can move forward.
So, yeah, so sure. So we we have been, uh, from the county's perspective, we've been engaged to develop two parcels, really. One is on La Ni, one's over in uh on Maui in the Peeling. So we've been identified, we're we have a, we have a resolution passed that gave us the sort of right to go forward with this, these two really developments, proposed developments. When I say getting awarded, I mean, we operate in the tax credit world, right? So we have to get an allocation from HHFDC. And that's really what we're talking about. As far as the the project on La Ni, we're there, we're partnering, we're going forward in one fashion or another. The time, for me, it's a timing issue, right? We don't get awarded this round, we're not giving up, we'll be there for the next round. But in the meantime, since we've been engaged by the county, we would like to then start putting in the infrastructure now to Doug's earlier comments, so that when next year, say, we don't get awarded. And they typically award in like July, August timeframe. Um, but we think that we, if we don't get awarded, we would go right into the the earthwork and the infrastructure development, so that by next year, that's all in. It just makes us more uh readiness standard is is much, much improved from where it is today. And Doug, I don't know if you have any thoughts to add there.
No, I think that's clear, because I think it sounds as though it's more this awarded idea is more about where we are progressively as far as the land being ready and getting things to a point where it's time to start building, not so much awarded, like, oh, we're gonna get it, more like moving forward in the process, right? Is that, that's what I'm understanding?
Yep, moving the process or moving the process along.
Okay, okay.
I'm gonna add to this one small thing to that is that, but these meetings are important, because like when Robin speaks or, you know, the the David, there's some things we can maybe tag on right now that we're not far enough along where we can't make adjustments for people. But at the same time, we're we're seeking it in earnest. We have done some things and we will continue to do some things. But the county and the state have to kind of bolster it, you know.
Wonderful. That that's, that's, that's wonderful news. I'm so glad to hear that. Thank you.
Sure. So um the follow up on that, uh, Doug or Tom, do you think that there's a role that us, our community needs to play in making sure HHFDC gives us the funds? Should we be writing letters to the HHFDC? And folks, just to remind you, that's the state. I think it's called Housing Urban, I don't know what it is, but it's they they decide who gets all the state money for the affordable housing projects. Your state entity. Does it help that you, they receive a bunch of testimony? Would, do you think that'll move it along?
You know, Gabe, I I I think it would, and I think in my, if I were, um, I think the best thing to do would be to see where we end up in August, you know,
Okay.
to push it, but here's, because here's what I'm saying now. Because if we play our cards right and we don't get it this time, then we're going to be very ready next time, you know, because the rest, because I'm coming at you for building permits and all the rest of that stuff. I mean, our development will continue. Then what would happen is, I absolutely think that the community should come with that spirit of it's my turn, the attitude that, you know, we haven't had one in a long time, it's our turn, you know, I think that would really help. So I'll I'll tell you when, but I think if you went this time, they're saying, well, we're scoring and look how far these are compared to this guy. He's got building permits, he's shovel-ready. My goal is if we don't get it this time, we're gonna be shovel-ready. And then I expect to say it's time for you guys to fund this thing, you know?
I'm I'm gonna, I hear where you're coming from, that we have to speak to those state folks on that terms, but this is shovel-ready for La Ni. I mean, this is as shovel-ready as you're ever gonna get on La Ni.
I hear you.
How can you say we're not, I mean, how can you say we're, we need to be shovel-ready when we don't have a shovel? I mean, this is the only entitled land that the county has. I mean, come on, I don't know what else we need to do. Um, but yeah, I just wanted to add that in. Uh, I I know that um you you had a really good model, Doug, and this is a question someone texted me, so I'll I'll just pivot real quick. You had a really good model in the Hawaiian homes and the Kona site. What was the name? I know it was on your um your sheet. What was the name of that project? Uh, villages of?
Laipua.
Laipua.
Lailahu, Lailahu.
Laipua.
Okay. And I know, do you have a website that you can look at some of the units, or is people have to go and check it out themselves? Oh, you muted, Doug. You muted yourself.
Looking at one unit right here. But what we can do is, I think we have, you know, in turn, what we'll do is let's get Tom to send over the um, the new models that we have, right, the new models. And then let's give you the floor plans and all that. And all, and we also have pictures, and I think we have interior pictures too. So I'll have Don, our design team, we'll get that together and I will have Tom put together supplemental package, right? We'll get that up here.
Thank you. Um, okay, folks, I I want to respect your time. It's six oh seven. I see Butch turning his camera on. Uh, does anybody else have any questions before we go back to Butch for second round? I don't see any hands. Uh, Butch, go ahead. The floor is yours.
Okay, uh, Tom and Doug, so the best case scenario, we got five million from the feds, ten millions from the county, and ideally we're gonna know how much the state will give us in in July, August. So that's the ideal situation. In the event that we don't get state funding, what what will this project look like moving forward till the next go around?
I think he just said he was gonna do the infrastructure, focus on the roads, but isn't that what you mentioned, Doug, Tom?
Yes, we we would do, we would start with the the infrastructure being the uh sewer extensions, lift stations, curbs, gutters and roads. That's what we'd like to put in, so that when next two, uh, next February rolls around to Doug's point, we'll 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 be much more ready in the state's state's eyes.
Let's get a grubbing grading permit and just start doing it.
Yeah, that's, yeah, no, but that's, that's part of it. What I was gonna say, that's right. Uh, uh, but what I was gonna say is, um, Tom, really quickly, as we have had this discussion, what we should have it probably with, decide like we're doing with uh the Peeling is that we probably need a pre-development piece, because what we should do, Tom, is just try to get the billing permits going. You know, the whole, I mean, just, there's all the soft costs can be done now. So speaking to Butch over there, is that we can do, like, get the architecture going. Let's do the architecture and and we could do that pretty quick, because we already have the um we need a civil, but we already have the houses, right? So do you get the architecture going, get all that? Because, Tom, we should be ready. If we're not ready now, we should be ready to, I mean, the timeline for me, can we build full permits by at the latest February of twenty sixteen? And at the same time, build the infrastructure. So get the federal money and Butch, just to save some, we're between two and five with the feds. So the the minimum will be two. Uh, and I think the cap is five, just just to be clear on the money, but what I'm saying is, and see how far that money goes and then so that's the plan. So we do the soft cost stuff, Butch, so we, which we'd have to do anyway. So even if we started today, you know, we're probably gonna be way down the road before we have the building permits and all that kind of stuff. So we're, I don't want to lose the year if we don't get funded. Let me just, that's like the blunt
Yeah.
answer. And I'm just trying to save the year by going back to to the county and saying, let's unleash the ten. Let's get the the two to five going. Let's do all our permits, our fees and everything. So we don't have to, it's stuff we have to do anyway. So can't we just start with that money and get her all ready? And then we're gonna go up to the county and say, I've got pads and I've got building permits.
Mm-hmm.
That's it. I'm going, you know, let me go vertical. And that's what they'll do. Does that, does that make sense, Butch? Are we good or not?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, um, you know, I, it's ten after six right now, and I want to make sure that everybody had a chance to ask a question if they needed to ask it. Um, I'm not seeing any hands or any cameras being turned on. Uh, I want to first off, thank everybody who's here. It shows that you care and, you know, we want, we want to have uh our, the builders here, Doug and Tom, here's uh some of our concerns and also hear what they're willing to bring to the table. And I'll just say it once again, these guys are great builders. Um, they do a great product. And I'm really happy and honored that you guys came here to work with us on this project. So thank you so much. Really appreciate you guys. And um with that, I think we can end it. So thank you so much, everybody.
Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it. Thanks.